Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, November 9th, 2022. I believe it's November at 6:00 PM. And we are, this is the Gloucester School Committee, and we are meeting at Gloucester High School, 32 O. Johnson Road, Gloucester, Massachusetts. Consistent with Chapter 107 of the X in 2022, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there's a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options. During oral communications, be recognized to speak. I ask, I will say that Commission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engage like lone runners. And I ask that you join me in a little salute to the flag. For the record, we have Superintendent Lomans, Assistant Superintendent Amy Pasquarello, Member Laura Wiesen, myself Kathy Clancy, Member Bill Melvin, Mayor Greg Berger. Samantha Watson will be a little bit late, and she'll be joining us here. Joining us remotely is Keith Minio, and Maria Pugliar, Recording Secretary, is here. Okay. We will move on to oral communications. If there's anybody in attendance that would like to speak to us under oral communications, now is your opportunity. Okay, seeing none. Comments from the chair. I'm gonna just make a quick comment. I know the superintendent last meeting thanked everybody for a lot of the hefty topics we've been handling and discussing and moving forward over the past few months. And I just want to thank everybody for such thoughtful and professional and really good operating as a committee. You may not always necessarily agree, but I do find us all very respectful and really focused on what's best for children. So let's keep that up. Okay. Recognitions. If they have any recognitions.
I want to recognize Mr. Melvin, Kathy Clancy, and Melissa Claire for going to the National Association of School Committee and School Superintendent's Joint Conference last week. Anything you guys, which is great to go together. I'm sorry I wasn't there. Next year, I hope. Anything you guys want to share about just being there and being one of the school committee members and superintendent?
Can you say?
I thought it was very well, you know, conference itself was well done, well put on, a lot of great breakout sessions. I met a tremendous amount of people that were well-versed in school committees. And I just thought it was really valuable as a school committee member to be there and be with other school committee members throughout the Commonwealth. So really enjoyed it.
Yeah, I thought their agenda and all the topics that they covered were particularly helpful. I mean, that is the professional development that we have as members. And sometimes you sit and you, you know, you realize that our district is doing so many things well and that our committee is functioning really well. So that's always a nice validation of work and how we approach the work, both from superintendent and all the hard work that goes on, from educating our kids to the way and rules that we have within it. And it really is nice to connect with people from other districts and figure out what they're doing. I had an opportunity to talk to a couple people about how they're doing their meetings with people physically attending the meeting. And the key is their local cable TV filming. So that's kind of the way that has been, they've been able to do it because the technology is just different, right? But anyway, it was a good couple days. So I was there for a couple days.
I figured out one more thing, Ben. One of my takeaways was how impressed I am without patting ourselves on the back at how good we are procedurally. We do think very, very well. Listening to other school committees, I was like, I think we got that covered. We do that pretty well. I said that a bunch of times for myself. I was really impressed with that. So.
I mean, I've seen, I've worked in numerous school committees, you know, and numerous communities, and it's hard to know that until you hear, as you said, you can't go to other folks and hear from them. But it's something that this committee, since I got here, has done very well. I mean, obviously before that, but what I know, yeah. Absolutely.
And I'll just add one more thing, too, because a lot of the, they have general sessions, sometimes one in the morning and one at noon. And they're real important topics in education right now. And to hear people that kind of are experts or have been asked to speak on those topics are things that are all reflected in our district for ongoing improvement plan and things that have already been brought along. So that's another validation that we are addressing.
Thank you, Laura.
I will recognize the girls' field hockey team, which is in their second round of playoffs outside at Miller Stadium. And when I left to come back to the meeting, they were up 1-0. I don't know what it is now, but let's all send them good vibes. It's a really good team with a lot of talented kids. And let's hope they win.
I heard a cheer as I walked in.
Oh, exactly.
That was for you. That was for you.
They said, "One, two, three Gloucesters," so.
Okay.
I do just quick recognitions since you guys talked about school committee meetings. I found work going in. The mayor's meeting has been great. And I've got to know Kim Driscoll pretty well. And just want to give the congratulations to our colleague, a mayor and a school committee member, now going to be lieutenant governor and somebody in that office who understands the roles wherein it is going to be really beneficial for us.
Okay. Next, we have our Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council. And I see Chloe DeGaspovian on our call. Thank you, Chloe, for coming tonight.
Hi.
Good evening.
So this past weekend at the Crane Estate in Castle Hill in Ipswich, six GHS students were selected to show their work for the annual Crane Estate Student Art Show Sale. And Gloucester's Ally DeCastro was awarded the People's Voice Award. The GHS Theater Program has their fall play, Clue, on stage, and it starts next week on November 17th, Friday, November 18th, Saturday, and November 19th. And tickets will be available on their website or at the door. The mental health ambassadors will go downtown next Wednesday to introduce their local, to introduce to our local businesses the work that they're doing and inviting them to participate in supporting the Green Bandana Campaign or advertising a sticker for All to See. Our guidance counselors have submitted over 500 pieces of application material to colleges on behalf of Class of 2023 students. And over 60 college admissions representatives have visited GHS this fall. The baseball and hockey teams are both hosting food drives for the open door now through November. And the baseball team will be picking up at houses and bringing the donations to the open door. GHS has raised over $1,600 for 47 Thanksgiving baskets to donate to families in need. 14 female students from our local vocational programs, the Carpentry, Auto, Electrical, and Advanced Manufacturing, visited the Electrical Union to see how girls in trades and had the opportunity to succeed this today. The senior class had their semi-formal Monday night, and it was very successful and enjoyable. And GHS will be hosting their annual blood drive on December 9.
Could I show the artwork that Chloe mentioned?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I actually have photos of that from Teacher Emily Carney. Chloe, thanks for sharing that. First of all, if you just hang on, I'll show those on the screen. Here we go. Should go see this. So this is Caleb DeCosta photo, Caleb DeCosta. Folks might recognize that scene. And then this is from Emma Allen. That is a waterfront scene, but I don't think Gloucester's seeing it as a pelican, but you never know. This is from Janet Church. This is all photography. Brady Sullivan. Trudy Dowd. That's Trudy himself as well. That's a photo. I can zoom in or not. But that's at Chayaloo. Yeah, recognize that. Oh, wait a second here, hold on. And the last one, I think Chloe said was an award winner. Zoom in a little bit. This is Alan Castro. I think that's her grandfather. I'm not quite sure. That's, that's, that's not a photo, obviously, but it's rendered our work. I can see why that was an award winner.
Very nice.
Yeah, so great, great work by our students, for the teachers as well, obviously. And really wonderful for them to be not only shown, but recognized as well. So thanks for bringing it up, Chloe. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Chloe, for being here. We appreciate it. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none. I move that we approve the consent agenda. We'll call Maria, please.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Jefferson Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio. And Mayor Berger.
Yes.
We move on to deliberations on education issues in the superintendent's report. First up is.
I'm gonna give a little, a few just news items.
Okay.
And then this pastor will take it. Let's go take this off while we've been talking. I'll share my screen. So like we like to say, everything matters here in Gloucester schools, and everybody belongs. And so tonight, just giving updates. So as folks know, yesterday was a day off for students, which means in professional development day, we have it every year, typically on Election Day. And often, a professional development day for families is more of a quandary, a question. One, first, what am I going to do with my kids? And two, what are those, what are teachers and the school staff doing? And why are they doing this to me? Which, as a parent of younger kids, I understand that, you know, sort of in the middle of the year, there's this day break, right? Well, just so I want to help educate the committee, but also the public. Yesterday was a fantastic day for so many of our staff. First of all, it was kind of organized by Greg Bach. He's been doing this for years. And this is sort of his last hurrah, this professional development day. There were 70 offerings. And a couple things on that. One, the alignment with the Plan for Ongoing Improvement was impeccable, just in really great alignment with. And what that means is that a lot of really important work on instruction, instructional improvement, curriculum design at all levels, pre-K through 12. At O'Malley, so pre-K through eight folks are mostly at O'Malley. And then high school folks are a little bit at O'Malley, but then largely here. And so at O'Malley, you had, for example, teams in each grade that taught social studies units. You had English teachers continue to work on their piloting of their new English that, as they determine what the new English curriculum will be. You had work on social-emotional issues. I'll talk about one in a moment with Lynn Lyons. But also, you know, real sort of grander, but very important ones, behavior and autism, self-care in the classrooms. An important piece that continues on going to work at the high school around instructional improvement and was teams of teachers working small groups on lesson planning and sort of sharing lesson planning, sharing a lesson, and getting feedback from their colleagues on that. That's something that is sort of new or hadn't been done in high school for a little bit. So the folks did a really nice job with it and sort of supporting their colleagues in sort of addressing a sort of dilemma that they had about lessons and development are working on. We also worked on communication tools and communication outreach to parents and families. And then also a number of social-emotional areas. I'll show some photos. And then one last piece, which I'll get to just, is all staff had the opportunity to work and listen to Lynn Lyons present. I'll share more about her in a moment, but really, really powerful lessons, guidance, suggestions, information around supporting students with anxiety. And anxiety on the full range of that. You know, a kid is worried, two kids has debilitating anxiety or depression. She's just a very powerful speaker, and she's coming to speak to parents and kids on December 6th, which I'll show you in a moment. But want to show folks some photos. So this is Lynn Lyons here, both at O'Malley and GHS. And then she did, at both places, she did a smaller group session with teachers who opted in. That is, I'll get to that. I'll get to those photos in a moment. Here's the social studies folks. On the left, some of the social studies teachers working on unit redesign at O'Malley. This is speaking Spanish to their students so developing some basic language skills to help with our English learners. 3D printing at O'Malley. So you see O'Malley teachers there working with elementary school teachers work developing units using 3D printing. On the right-hand side, we worked with community backyard growers joining us yesterday to help folks work on how to build raised garden beds in their own backyards as well as the schools. On the left, you see catered teachers working on Witten Wisdom and our English language arts curriculum. And on the right, I believe you see Superintendent Pasquarello meeting some teachers and learning more about recertification requirements for literature, making sure they're up to speed on that. And then we did have some fun sessions for staff. And Mayor Berger, I see you smiling. You appreciate this. This was an impromptu band that cleans out the day to O'Malley. You see singers and people reliving old past and old songs. You see, that's Principal Fusco on bass. He never passed it off, can't even play bass and put on his leather jacket, apparently.
Inside classes.
We also had, but this was really part of, also community building, an important piece of schools. And in any workplaces, folks make sure that they have a sense of connection and belonging. And so we had a bunch of sessions as well that helped build that for teachers. So this has been videoed by a number of people and maybe on social media, but we're not going to put it on our.
What you don't see is all of the staff in the back of the auditorium enjoying every moment of it and all coming together and cheering. It was really a unifying moment.
Yeah, it's great. Just the type of thing you want folks to do. Let me move back. Let me transition to Lynn Lyons. So love to have your help through your social media avenues and your networks to make sure folks know that Lynn Lyons is coming. So I had the opportunity to listen in and sit in on the high school presentation yesterday. And I think Lynn coming on December 6th is probably the single most important parenting, education workshop session that I think that folks could have right now in this time and this age. It's something I wish, my wife and I, really me, I won't speak for my wife. I had 20 years ago, my kids are much younger, that would have helped, helped me and helped them quite a bit. And helped me avoid some pretty common pitfalls. But she's just very helpful in terms of helping families, helping our staff understand what anxiety means, how it plays out, and the whole range of it. But also offering real understanding, really empathy, but then also real strategies on how to work with students or your own children. Very powerful speaker, very impactful. And we're going to get help from our PTOs for communicating this out, school members. But just really want to make sure we have a good turnout so folks can benefit from this great resource. Another piece to know about Lynn Lyons is that she's been working with our, often what you have in schools, you have someone should show up for one day. And we've been actually working with Lynn for over a year. She consults with our clinical staff every month, every other month, I believe it is. That was organized and arranged by Amy Cam. And so coming here yesterday, she actually really, for herself, said it was like coming home and seeing a bunch of friends, you know? Which she doesn't often get that chance in terms of the way she works with schools. But so I really value and cherish the way that Amy Cam and our clinical staff has developed the program with her and learning from her. And because of that, really supporting our students in effective ways. So that's on December 6th, right here at high school. And then want to go back. O'Malley had a fantastic school dance last week. And want to really thank the O'Malley staff, school leaders. The PTO played a really big part in both the creation of it, but also the staffing, the chaperoning. This was a very successful dance. No phones, no backpacks, and that really helped a lot. But also another thing, what you see here is some of the photo booth. So there's also dancing, obviously, but also they had crafts and games in the hallway outside the learning commons and also the gym. Because not everyone likes to dance or just hang out at a dance, especially middle school. So kids had a lot of other options. And see on the left, those two creatures, they are, rumor has, those are two assistant principals. I shall not be named. And it looks like Ernie and Bert, but. And then you have some kids just having a good time. Good, safe time, really. And one thing, you know, we made sure there's no phones, and that helped on a number of levels. One, kids are really focusing on being with each other, enjoying that and not being somewhere else on their phones. And also helped that, we believe, or my, this is my inference, just talking to some folks, that this helped the kids realize that they wouldn't be photographed or videoed and then showed up later at another time, you know? So that added, I think, a nice sense of safety for folks. So but a huge success, about 400 kids or so. Yeah, so big turnout there. So thank you to O'Malley, PTO, and truly the staff and you sit there and the kids for being cooperative, safe, and having a fun time.
Can I just ask, I have two questions.
Of course.
One question on that. When not being, I mean, we know that this is a question. Like if students have to leave their phones behind, how do they react? How do they react not having backpacks and phones?
It didn't seem to be any problems, you know? I mean, so they're used to not having phones at O'Malley now. They've been doing it all year, you know? Not having it out or not having a mobile. And so, and also another piece that they did was, they essentially had permission slip. So they sent information home about how the night would run to families, and then had signed off, then rented, and the kid had permission to be there. So I think there's also, it wasn't surprising to anyone.
Right.
Yeah, so but I think it worked very well. Yeah, it was both parent leader, parent PTO leader, and also assistant principals that had very similar messages about how well it went.
Great. And the second thing, just so you know, is I already saw today regarding the Lynn Lyons event that pediatricians are putting it out on social media, not just Gloucester pediatricians.
Oh, wow.
Right, so it sounded like Go Out from Garden City. So that's a big regional pediatrician's office. So just to be aware
Yeah.
that you might get, or we might get, a big, a big audience.
Okay, that's good. That's what we're, and that's part of the parts we have, you know, with pediatricians, Amy Cam, and others. Like make sure people know about.
Right.
So that's great. Yeah, it's just going to be a great resource for them.
That's great. And that's, I'm sorry, Laura.
No, no.
All set? That's part of the, there's also a resource night that night. Is that?
Yeah, yeah, so at the, at the, at the high school that night, your resource night for, you know, agencies and partners and access income, you know, support and care. Amy Cam's organizing that with others as well. And that is part of the, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And I've already shared it. And I was amazed that a lot of people that took my post and shared it.
Great.
So it's just really good.
Yeah, that's really one of the real strengths of social media. It's just that it can really just push forward. It's great.
Unless comment on the phones. My son went to that dance, you know, three years ago.
Yeah.
And they were not allowed to have phones that day. There was never discussion, they were, and let him to enjoy themselves. That could have helped a lot.
So one of the additional things O'Malley is doing this year is asking for more student voice. And the students were part of planning that. And they were part of coming up with the rules. And the no phones was partially their idea. Oh, great.
Because they hadn't had dance in a while.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so then moving on. Let me go over to Pastor Sprella to give us the MCAS update. So, oh, sorry, let me just say one thing on this, which is, so we're going, tonight, we're going to do two things. And we're doing very purposely this way. 3D A and MCAST update as well as the 3D A professional development work we go to here. Okay, so what you just heard about, we don't hear more. Because those really are performance, academic achievement, is obviously very tied to the support, skill development, and training and collaboration of our teachers and all the instructors or training staff. So that's why we're matching these. And then two weeks from now, same thing for high school. You know, high school MCAS as well as high school professional. Another thing, just to sort of lay the land here, sort of live framework is it's a funny time looking at MCAS. And it has been for the last few years. And one thing you'll hear tonight from Amy is, of course, the resultant in how we're sort of rebounding and rebounding strong in some areas compared to state and rebounding, you know, not as well in a few other areas. But also, you know, about just statewide, the absentee, absenteeism. And that is clearly making an impact, not only here, but across the state on test scores. So that's why it's a complicated picture right now. But it's a picture for us that we pay close attention to, but also we sort of utilize as a point in time. But also, as you know, K to five, where you're closely your benchmark assessments and then use those to guide instruction. And now doing more of that at the middle school and bringing it into the high school as well. But that's some of the assessment work that's for us more powerful. But every year, MCAST is a good benchmark to see what products are making overall.
Thank you. I'm sure you've all seen on the news, MCAST as a state coming out of a pandemic. There's drastic changes, right? So we really can look at this data and dive in deep, which I have. But I think the best way to look at it is to look at it as telling a story. So we're looking at the road to recovery, and we're looking at rebounding. And we are rebounding in some places really well, and in some places not yet. And we will, I will follow this with professional development, because that's to target the not yet, right? And to continue what we're doing well. So just to remind you, a full MCAST has not happened since 2019 for grades three to eight. In 2020, there was no MCAST testing. In 21, we took like a half MCAST. Everybody took one session, they didn't do the full thing. One student might have taken session A and the other session B. So it's not, it's not as easy to compute to 2021 data because it wasn't a full test. So I just want to point that out. And so there'll be a lot of times, I'm going to show you a lot of numbers. We're going to look all the way back to 19, pre-pandemic. I'm going to show you some data in 21 as a frame of reference. But we're really looking at getting back to that 19, pre-pandemic is where our goal is. We're not there yet, no one in the state is there. But our goal is to go there. So these are statewide assumptions. This is what the state has given us, or summaries, not assumptions, excuse me. So in the 2022, MCAST shows some mixed results when compared to 21. So it's very, like I said, it's very hard to compare it to 21 data. It's showing that math scores are increasing across the state. It's showing that some ELA scores have actually declined since last year across the state, and science scores are starting to come up. We're going to get into our data in a few minutes. Statewide results are, when they're compared to pre-pandemic levels, there's substantial work we have to do. But in literacy, that's a focus that we're going to attack across the state, and particularly here, and already got some good headway here in Gloucester with an implementation of a new curriculum and pilot at the middle school. And absenteeism is absolutely, has still been a challenge, okay? And we're bringing back student growth. So with the absence of consistent testing, it's been hard to look at student growth with MCAST data. Never gave it up as a district with benchmark testing, progress monitoring. We never gave up the student growth. But to look at MCAST and look at student growth, that, we're able to start to bring that back now that we're being more consistently tested. Can you raise your hand?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm comfortable.
That's okay. So I just want to remind you of the basic standards for student growth. So it talks to you about, so SGP is student growth percentile. You don't want to be 1 to 19 percentile, it's very low. They say typical growth is to be in the 40th to 59 or 60 percentile. If we're going to fill gaps, and we're going to rebound from this pandemic in a productive way, my goal, and I believe it's Lieutenant Lemus' goal and all of ours' goal, is we need some high growth. So we're looking for 60% growth or higher. We're not there yet, but that's our goal. We are not, we're rebounding in some areas, but we have ways to go, okay? So when we talk about growth, I want 40 to 60, they say is typical. We're looking for high growth, and we would like to go higher, okay? Yes.
Sorry, is the desire to get to 60% growth, is that to kind of get us back to?
It will fill the gaps, but it also continues to push students. So you can have a high achieving student that just stays high achieving, but isn't, could have a low growth percentile because they're not being challenged and pushed to go further. So that's why it's nice to look at the growth percentile because it's looking at every child where they are and how much we're challenging all students to learn and grow, right? So then, and it's also, if you, when we look at the subgroups, in order to close the gaps, we need a higher growth percentile because they have to learn at a higher rate to get to catch up.
And just a quick follow-up, are we going to, like, are we going to see how that growth is measured, or is it?
So it's comparing last year's data to this year's data. And we're also going to see 19 to 22. So I'm going to show you that.
And are metrics the same across the Commonwealth?
Yes. So the growth data I'm getting from the state.
I see.
For MCAST.
That's enough of my smart questions.
Well, you might come up with something else.
I'm telling you.
So we're going to start with English Language Arts. There's a lot of numbers. I tried to shade them so that you can follow it a little bit. The darker shade is our 2019 data. It's the state in comparison to our district. And then in the middle, we have 22, and then on the right, we have, no, 21's in the middle, 22's on the right, okay? Don't start doing all the math in your head, I'm going to show it to you on the next slide. Okay, so if you look here, we see our comparison, our difference between the state to our district in 20, from 2019 to 22. Here's from 22 to 21. What I want you to focus on is this last two, these last two columns where we're comparing the change from 19 to 22. And what we're measuring in this is students who have met or exceeded the benchmark, okay? So any student who's met or exceeded the benchmark, for example, if, I'm going to go back just for a second. In 22, 44% met or exceeded in the state, and 51 in our district from third grade. That make sense? Okay. Then we'll go back here, and I want to focus in on these two columns. And you can see that the state is 11 points lower than it was in fifth grade than 2019.
So like before pandemic?
Before pandemic. Before pandemic, they are 11.11 percentage points lower. We are 16, so we are substantially lower than the state there. So fifth grade ELA, it's a concern. It's a focus for us, right? It's hard because we're folk, there's a lot of negative numbers. So you want to think you want to be closer to zero, or in the positive is even better, right? Because zero gets us back to pre-pandemic, okay? So seventh grade, we also have a challenge of being lower than the state. But the news is not always, is not all red. So we're going to go here, and I want to point out that if we look at third grade, we took a hit when 19, 21 came. But we are coming back faster than the state. So the state is still 12 points lower, we are only four points lower. Even though it's negative, we're rebounding faster for third grade. So that's a good thing. We are also rebounding faster in eighth grade for ELA. So this is a story of where we have to work and where we have to continue to grow because we're on the right track, right? You with me? A lot of numbers. Okay.
Yeah, but they're only double-digit numbers.
There you go, but I'm going into the negatives, so. So this, for this chart, we're looking at subgroups, okay? And we're only looking at this year's data for this, these purposes. So the top line is all students, state met or exceeded, grades three through eight, 41%. Our district 37, okay? So when we look in on that, hone in on that, that, I'm going to go back a little bit before we get there, I want to point out the gaps. So if we have 41% of all of our stu-, or the state is 41, we have 37% of all of our students meeting or exceeding. We only have 12% of our students with disability meeting or exceeding. We only have 14 of EL, 27 of low income, and 25 of high needs. And you can see that comparison with the state. Yep? No, this is just a clarification. I always think it's helpful for the people watching to explain, is subgroups sounds negative? Yep. So I think it's always good to explain that that's a state. It's a state mandated, but not state mandated, state category. Right. And we track because we want to close any achieving gaps. And it's a category that is categorized by information we have in our student database, and we look to close any achieving. And we're required. We are required to look at this. I just want to, it sometimes comes across as in a negative way. Yes, well, it's not meant that way, and there's some positives in here too. We're going to have some nice green circles, yes.
Also, it might, some students could be represented in a couple of different categories, right?
Yes, so high needs is made up of students with, students with disabilities, students low income, it's kind of, it's a collection of all of them. EL students also. Right. Okay. So our EL students are underperforming in comparison with the state as well. So that is an area that we need to grow and really focus on. If you look, our low income students are doing better than the state, but we still want to get more equity going forward with our, overall. And then when we look to that student growth percentile over here, we're pretty close to the state's percentile, growth percentile. But like I said, we want to be higher. We are looking for more growth than that, okay?
There's a couple of things here also to add, and just to point out, if you look at all students, 37% meeting or exceeding these grades three through eight in ELA, I guess I could know. And I want to be real clear about that. The good news on that, and Amy will get into this a little bit later, is the work we're doing with our new English Language Arts curriculum is really meant to address that. And the work we did prior to that with Reading Streets helped move us along the path. Wet and Wisdom and Foundation, Foundation rather than G O Ds, will take us to the next step. And as you know, and we've shared with you, you know, the rollout implementation of that is incredibly, is being very well done, very well led, very collaborative, and we have a lot of confidence that the principals are paying very close attention to it and will support it fully. And they're both in their schools, but also across our schools. So our coaches are working together, our, 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 our elementary school teachers are working together through freshman communities and other ways to lead a leadership team. And then also, as you know, in terms of English Language Arts at, at O'Malley, reviewing that curriculum, and will be adopting a new one by end of this year. And then also, the keys to literacy work, which cross literacy across the curriculum at O'Malley as well. So those are pieces that, that were beginning. And that's to improve academic achievement, improve engagement, and deepen learning. And all that should have an impact on any way we meet these test kids, but also in the MCAST as well.
I have no idea if you have any data on this at all, but I'm going to ask a question anyway. When we roll out a new curriculum, is there any data that says, like, when we should start to see improvement?
I can tell you through experience. Typically, to fully implement a new curriculum, any new curriculum, it's about two years. For the elementary ELA, for example, we are staggering implementation. So about half of our teachers are implementing it this year. The other half will implement next year. So by year three, we'll be all teaching the same curriculum, and we will start to see students entering in to say a third grade classroom that has had the same curriculum and the prerequisite skills the year before, and hopefully the year before that. And as it goes through, because it's a spiraling curriculum, as we go through the years, it will become more consistent. And as the teachers learn and grow, and that we provide professional development to support them, and we really make the curriculum our own, we'll start to see results. Yes.
Thanks. I think that's my biggest concern, Amy, is are the teachers rolling up? And I'm a huge fan of Wet and Wisdom, love it, huge cheerleader for Wet and Wisdom. But are the teachers getting enough time from a professional development standpoint to kind of begin the process of, you know, learning how to implement Wet and Wisdom into their?
So that's why we're doing it slowly. That's why we're taking the two-year implementation. And I'm going to get in, I'll get into all of the professional development supports we have when we do the next slideshow. But we are hopefully and purposefully giving them that time. Is it enough? That's our goal, right? There always can be more. But our goal is to give as much support and professional development and time for really collaboration, because the teachers are the ones that are going to own it and learn it. Yeah, so that's our goal. Okay? So to kind of revisit the whole progression, but through math, here we have our 19 data in comparison to the state, 21, and then 22. Again, I don't want you to get too hung up on all these numbers. If you look overall, grades three through eight, 39% met or exceeded for the state, 34 for Gloucester. But when we go forward, I'm going to hone in on this change from 19 to 22. And you can see fifth grade for math is also a concern because we are not bouncing back as fast as the state, okay? However, we have third grade where we are bouncing back higher than the state. We have sixth grade, eighth grade, and collectively, grades three through eight, we are coming back faster for math than the state was. So that's a celebration. Doesn't mean we're done yet. Laura?
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember learning when we were in the midst of the pandemic, or as we were coming, or we're still in it. But that third grade, that there was a moment for math instruction going from second to third grade. And tell me if I'm misremembering this, where there were, there were, because that's, those are the current fifth graders now. Where there were, there were sort of basics that were being, right? Were being taught the end of second grade. The kids who missed school, the end of second grade, had then were already behind for third, and that that was a gap. I remember that we've been looking at.
Near C.
Right, and so this is that gap. And, and so I'm, you know, I'm encouraged to know that we already knew this, right? We predicted, you predicted it. I remember Greg and others saying, this is a very hard year to lose math. And that also makes me think that, having predicted it, you will have ways to.
We are working, one of the, one of the trainings this, yesterday, was on bar modeling, like we are working on it, absolutely.
And was there a similar thing for seventh grade?
So math in seventh grade, it was ELA that seventh grade is showing below. Math, they are not, we're not doing better than the state, but we're within a point, without.
So it's eight sets more.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for remembering that.
We just have that one slide.
Absolutely. I get to go through all my animation, though. There you go.
So, so I guess, when I look at this data, right, meets and exceeds, it still just doesn't make sense to me that even the state is at like 50% or lower. Like, to me, it just speaks to like, what, what are we doing wrong? Is it the test that's wrong? Is it the teaching that's wrong? I'm not talking specifically about our district. It just feels like there should be higher. I don't, I don't think you necessarily have to have an answer to that, but it's just, it feels really frustrating to me to look at state data and still see only 50%.
Right, and now that's the average for the state, right? So there are districts that are much higher, there are districts that are much lower. So, yeah, it's a tough test, but I still think we should at least be back to where we are, where we were in 19, but I am a little more optimistic about it. I want to be higher. And our goal is to be higher. And our goal is to have a higher growth and to continue to work on it. And, yeah, we can look at the tests and things like that, too. But we need to look at our students that are in front of us. And I truly think the growth and making sure they're growing academically, socially, emotionally, just as being good humans, that's our job, right? And we're looking at the growth.
Yes, so I know this is today's presentation, but I, in the past, I know they gave out selected questions to districts to.
Sample questions?
Sample questions, so that you could start, you could see what was asked, how it was asked, and what the.
They released some questions that we can get your point.
Yeah, so and I assume that's going to be part of the work to understand maybe certain pieces of math that we did good in.
So that's the work that's done at the building level. And I'm happy to share some of those questions with you if you'd like. But this is the overarching review for you and for the community. But the work that school levels are doing, they get into the released questions, they analyze them, and is our curriculum addressing the standards that are being asked? Sometimes the language of MCAST questions are, they choose the best three answers, and the student chooses the best answer instead of reading the, so to even teaching that skill is something that we can learn from looking at those questions. That's something that absolutely we can do at the field.
They don't want to, I mean, I almost need some time to just process all this, but.
Yeah, it's a lot of math.
There's a lot of stuff, right? And one of the things that kind of hits me right off the bat is, you know, we kind of use the state, what the state's doing as the bar, you know, like, okay, let's try and get back to where the state is. I'm not afraid to set the bar higher, you know, higher than the state, thanks.
I want to beat the state.
Yeah, right, exactly, you know.
Yeah, no, I, I, sorry.
No, that was, that's kind of the gist of it. And I know, I was, today I was reading Superintendent Gold's 2022-23. Goal number three, strengthen instruction and better content in general education and special education. Almost like, you know, that needs to be the, that needs to be top of the list to say, what are we doing to improve the content of what these kids are learning? And what can we do to beat the state?
Yes.
To become better than the state.
Absolutely.
No, I, just to build on that, I, yes, and I think you, if you're not hearing that from me, maybe you're definitely, it's that the state is the bar. The state, the match, state's not the goal.
Right.
Gloucester can exceed that by a lot. Yep. And if we're working to go in that direction, I think our staff and our school leaders and our district office leaders, I think are focused on how do we continue to deepen belonging as, as, you know, the foundation. What that allows then is then with high quality instruction and high quality curriculum, that folks are doing, it's aligned, and it's working together to understand how to teach that curriculum, then we can go further. Another piece on this, and this just builds on, I think, saving you asked this question earlier in terms of timing, you know, another way to improve skills and academic learning, and which, and you see impact scores, whether that's local benchmark score or MCAST, is through interventions, you know, so the second dose for students, and that's some of the investments made through the ESRA funds. And especially, and one example you've heard about is at O'Malley. It was there, literally, literally mentioned last year, they saw kids who were getting a double dose already in S R 360, seeing an impact of that very quickly. Those students who were not doing as well, but weren't getting that interventions, you know, were sort of progressing, but the ones who were were progressing faster. Now, at O'Malley this year, we had that for math as well. So that double dose piece, you know, it saves more time on learning as in addition to strengthening instruction and teaching, for everyone gets the tier one instruction, that really helps as well. And so we're able to do more than we ever have, well, at the elementary level and the, and actually, middle and high. We have English intervention at high schools as well. So those two pieces working together is what started scores.
And I don't, and I'm not, I certainly don't want to come across as sounding like, oh, you know, being accusatory or anything like that. I recognize it. I think we're in the best position now, with the leadership we have and the teachers that we have, the educators that we have, to really kind of tackle this and say, okay. to really kind of tackle this and say, okay, let's get to it.
Oh, I'm competitive. We're going. I'm with it.
Good.
And then next, we have your, your values, the attendance piece.
Yeah, that's huge.
It is, it's important to not let kids fall behind. Right. Every day matters, to coin a phrase. Okay, so we did this. We're, we are coming back a little faster with math, so that is a celebration. And then looking at the subgroups, and again, you said that looking at the state is 39% met or exceeded. That we want that higher as a state, and we definitely want Gloucester to be higher, right? So that's our goal. So I'm not happy that we're below the state by five percentage points, that we're going to need to work on that. And again, our EL population, we need to, to focus in and give them some more support. We are slightly higher for low income students for mathematics, meeting and exceeding. And then the part I want to really point out is that growth percentile, remember I said, who remembers how high I wanted it to be, 60? We have some ways to go, okay? So that's our focus. We really need to push our students to grow. For science, there's, is there are no growth percentiles for science because it's given in fifth grade and eighth grade, it's, and they're different tests. So, but what we can say is that we took a large hit, might dip 12 points, and we are starting to come back in science for fifth grade and eighth grade. So those are good things. We're not back yet. We need to come further, but we are on track. And again, that's still only, we're equal to the state here at 43% meeting or exceeding. We should be higher.
Yes. Just a question. I know that the FOS science program, what year does that, is this the first year of that?
That's a very complicated question.
It's a simple question, complicated answer.
Exactly. It's a simple question, it's a complicated answer. But I'll try to summarize. We did adopt the FOS curriculum pre-pandemic, and we were starting to. And then we went into some remote learning, shorter days, social distancing, individual materials, and hands-on science was hard to do.
Right.
So it was very, it, we took a, a large hit. A lot of teachers went to other, some online resources. We used some mystery science, the district, and some other resources to cover the, and to teach the topics. But the hands-on learning was hard to do when we were in that kind of environment. We are getting more and more back to normal, so FOS is coming back. Some teachers are all on board, ready to get back into that. Some are liking some of the online tools, which is fine. They were effective. They were effective because we saw some growth, right? So we are working to bring back FOS consistently, grades two through five. I have one, one first grade teacher that is also implementing it. She asked to. You're going to hear a lot more about this during professional development. And even you're going to hear about next steps for science when you hear about the Brace grant that we received. So we got a lot of science coming, and the, the back to hands-on science is, is a good thing.
I just have personal experience that that's a very, that's having a very positive, that's very exciting for students.
And it was, it was hard to lose. I mean, we lost a lot of hands-on, just collaboration in the last few years, but we're bringing it back.
You see, eighth grade, eighth grade is probably one of the place, I mean, sorry, middle school is probably one of the places where we do hands-on science the best.
Right, yes.
And I think this is the only spot where we're above MCAS performance pre-pandemic, is eighth grade science. That's, that's really a culmination of those three years.
How much time in a day is dedicated to science at the elementary level? So there's not a lot of time in the, our days are short, right? And so it's tight. We tried to have 90 minutes a week on science. Some grades, because of the tuning and things like that, are able to do it a little differently. But the thought of the 90 minutes, teachers can do 30 minutes three times a week. They could do a 30-minute lesson, and the ideal would be a 60-minute lab, right? So they really could dive in for that hands-on. And different schools do it differently as far as implementation, but that's the, that's the goal. How is that compared to other districts? I don't have to answer too many.
Um, yeah, I, I, I think.
That's a curious, that's a question I would like to know is, how are our elementary schedules relative to?
That's a larger, just larger question because you're also talking about amount of time, how long the day is too, right?
Yes.
So that's a bigger question.
Yeah, and I did find out at the conference how low our day is relative to many districts.
Sure.
I mean, someone had seven-hour elementary days. Okay. So if we look at science by suburbs, and again, the state, suburbs as defined by the state, and we focus on this year's data, we are looking equal to the state, but we want to be higher. And our EL students, again, we really need to help support them. But students with disabilities were actually at a higher level than the state, also for low-income families. Those are good things. And then our change, we are coming back faster than the state, so this is good. We're actually above our, our students with disabilities who are 19, and we are back to even with high-income students. So science, we're doing, we're doing okay. We want to do more and better. So absenteeism, I went back and forth on what to share with absenteeism because there's so much. And I had a slide, and I decided to take it out because they changed the standard. So if you go on Desi and look, chronically absent in 2019 and 2021 was 10% of the school year. If you missed that, a student was chronically absent. For 2022, they commented as 20%, but only for the year 2022. They're going to go back to the 10% next year, is my understanding. So the data is skewed. And I think it's because, on average, so many students miss. And they had to because of the, like, you had to be out of school, and then they. Right. Because of quarantining, because of close contacts we were still doing, and all of that, they had to change. So these are observations from the state about absentee, absenteeism, but they, they apply to us, too. So statewide, students have attended less school over the past several years. The average student has missed 11 days in 2021 and 15 days in 2022. 18% of students missed 18 days in 2021, and 28% missed 18 days in 2022. I'll pause because that's a lot of numbers. Statewide chronic absenteeism for students in grades three through eight increased to, in 2023-22, by 138%, 41,000 versus 98,000 students as compared to 2019. 1.7 million days of missed school based, because of positive COVID-19 test cases in 2022. And this does not include the days that staff were absent or had to be out for close contacts. One million other school days were saved as a result of state testing program. State wanted to turn positive at the end, just slide it in. But absenteeism, it is a problem. And when you look to our plan for ongoing improvement, it's in that priority number one. It is something we need to do.
So just, I was having a recent conversation with a parent who was asking what the school committee does. And one of the things I talked about was the work we did on the new attendance policy. And she said, "Well, how are you telling parents that?" And I said, "Well, it's in the new handbook." And it's, she's like, you know, I don't know anything about this. So I, you know, you know, I just sort of took that the way I think she meant it, which is like, we need to know more. Parents need to know more about, about the impact of chronic absenteeism. And I think this speaks to, like, 1.7 million days missed of school because of a positive COVID-19 case is also like, it's, parents, while they need to be educated, they also haven't had choices, right? Like, kids are sick and families are sick. So I, I just sort of want to put in a plug to sort of start communicating more widely and more deeply about the impact of absenteeism, even understanding that some of this absenteeism couldn't be helped. So it's a delicate balance.
Yeah, it's not a pointing fingers. This is, this is a reality. Students have missed a lot of instruction due to being absent, or if their teacher was quarantining.
Right.
I mean, the, these are things that were out of our control. But they, we need to move forward and improve attendance. The quarantine restrictions have been lifted. There's a different guidelines we're, we're working under. So we are hopeful that we can improve that.
Right. I'm putting in a plug for some more communication.
Excellent.
We're gonna have a plug for what?
More communication.
Yeah, which dovetails into my. And I said it in my Cliff Notes, a little bit off track, but I was so impressed at the school committee convention when they talked about ways to communicate with parents and the use of animation, voiceovers from teachers and students. It was off the charts, the hit rates that they were getting, you know, sending out these videos on a, kind of a dedicated YouTube channel versus emails about the student handbook, check your book, you know, all that kind of stuff. Tremendous way to communicate, and all developed by Subbury School Committee and a gentleman that was a newscaster for years in the Boston area. And I just think it's not that we, we have to be more creative when it comes to communicating with parents. I know as a parent, I, you know, was not the most diligent when it came to checking on the school communications. And what can we do to improve that? And I think this is a, I can't think of a better example than absenteeism. And putting that in some sort of animated video to, to tell parents about the dangers of absenteeism.
It is something that attendance teams are working on, the communication, reaching out to students that are, you know, at risk. It is also something that principals have shared at meet-the-teacher night. It's definitely, it's a, it's like a drum they keep beating, but we need to beat it louder. But in, in, as been in meet-the-teacher night slides, it talks, you know, teachers are to talk about it in conferences, those kind of things, so. But yeah, I hear you. There's, there's more creative ways and other ways we can work on that.
Can I just, I'm sorry, just on that, but do they talk about it when there are kids who aren't in, in the, in the, in the yellow zone, right? I mean, I think that maybe teachers are talking about it when kids are getting close.
Yes, but I think that when I said the principals, that in that meet the teacher was to, that's to everybody. But that's, that's one time.
Right. And there's more times that can happen.
Absolutely.
Welcome back to me.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to share my takeaways from this. I think there's a lot of takeaways. But one, literacy. We really want to focus on literacy. I am happy that we are on it. We are in the process of implementing a new literacy curriculum at the elementary school at O'Malley. We are working on an ELA pilot program to adopt a new, a new curriculum and get some more interventions there. And throughout the night, you're going to have me, hear me refer back to the plan for ongoing improvement. So what we're doing in literacy goes to priority number two, that strengthening instruction, the tier one instructions for all students. So that's one takeaway. The achievement gaps, so that's when I spoke about the growth percentile. I want, I want to see more growth. I'd like to see students, us all grow and close some of those achievement gaps as well. Also part of priority number two of plan for ongoing improvement. Some of the multi-tiered systems of support, we've heard RTI before, this is more global, but that to strengthen that at the elementary levels, we are implementing it at O'Malley. So that, that's a wonderful thing. We are kind of on the road there. And then, of course, absenteeism is a huge thing, and we need to work on that. We have our attendance teams that are local at each school working on that. We have a district-wide attendance team that's working on that, and that would be go-to priority number one, that deepening the belonging and engagement for students. And this slide might not be necessary because we kind of ask questions along the way. But if you have any more, I'm happy to answer.
I remember what I was going to say. This is just aside in relation to parent communication. So my, the emails that I get from Ben and from Delina all go to my updates folder in Gmail. They do not go to my primary mailbox, just no matter how many times I've said prioritize this, prioritize this, prioritize this. It gets buried. Emails get buried in my email, in a different tab. I don't know why. But I'm just saying that because to, to Bill's point, that like, I think we might still need to get more creative about how we're reaching out to parents.
So we have updated our Gloucester Facebook page. Mike Gaffney has worked on that. And there might be, that might be a venue that we could really utilize to, to give some more communication on attendance policies.
Mike and I just sort of, you know, now that Mike's sort of up and, up to speed and, you know, the principals and, you know, I work closely together. You know, there's steps, right? And one of the steps we're just talking about is how do we do more? How do we get into some of the different types of communications? Video, for example. Have we got, you know, have we got a place for the superintendent, for principals, for others, you know? You can use video. I think we got to develop our skills in terms of the animation in the video that Bill was talking about. That's, that's, I should learn more about that. Mike and I should learn more about that. So and then also making sure that, you know, that we're reinforcing the priorities, really, showing success and really helping people understand the direction we're going. And then there's the, and that's sort of like district-wide type of things. And then also, you know, one of the really powerful tools we have is Kinbo. And primarily, Kinbo is used, the real name of it is text, it's a text. And text, you probably heard at the conference, texter, anyway, is a much more effective approach in terms of communicating. You don't get as buried as emails, and you can, and you can link to, you know, website or websites or, you know, remind them that somebody's in the email. One thing that I just heard anecdotally, some of our English learner families, is that a text to them through Kinbo, which is translated automatically, you know, letting them know that an email has come from the principal. And that seems, you know, just anecdotally, just on a small level, yeah, seems to be a, you know, a new approach that we're trying out and might have some, some real value, so. I hear you definitely on the, you know, trying more ways, and I think we have, you know, more of a team in place. And actually, you know, probably one more person, most efficient chapter, so. But that's, that's, so, yeah, ways to go.
I don't want to be absenteeism thing too, too much, but are we at a, is, are we, when will we, when will be, will we be at a point in this school year where we can say, last year had all these requirements of people being out? And so therefore, our absenteeism was X percent or whatever. And now this year, you know, September, October, November, and now it's December 1st, and we see a much lower because of the, you know what I mean? I just kind of want to.
So we already are at a point where we can kind of dive into some of that data. So Mike Meese has developed this data tool that is tracking absenteeism by school and by the district. And according to the new attendance policy, instead of waiting for, and you all know this, you wrote the policy inside it, but, but this data, the, the data studio is showing us that we're not waiting for a student to know five appearances. If they miss the first two out of four days, that's 50%, and they're already flagged to watch, right? And so we are watching that, and we are meeting as attendance teams. Some schools, the larger schools, are meeting weekly. Some are more bi-weekly because they have a small population or whatever the schools need, but we are watching that. I don't think we've gone back to compare to last year's data at this point. We might be able to do that. But we're watching it to try to intervene when students are getting flagged as possibly going into the chronic tendencies. We, we are trying interventions, reaching out, working with families, offering support, whether it be school phobia, whether it be a medical condition, whether it be, I don't know, but a discipline, or I don't know. But whatever the case is, we'll have the attendance team in place to work with families to help them.
Let me just add to that, which is on the school presentation schedule, December 14th, we have a attendance report. So, and goes into that. So, but yeah, so that's when we'll give you an update compared to last year and this year, how it's going. But I mean, what Amy is saying, that, that's the work. The attendance teams looking at, you know, each school level, across school, all schools. But we'll give an update on December 14th.
And related to that update, who knows where we'll be on December 14th? But just as I think parents especially are hearing a lot about flu and RSV and everything else, I don't know if Jeff Parko weighs in. Cause I'd be curious, you know, if there's a like flu, you know, if like tons of kids start to be out because of the flu. Like I'd love some input on if we know that, like if we know that kids are being out because they're sick, kids are being out because they're at Disney World. Like, you know, it's, it's different. So I, I mean.
We don't always know that. It's, it's, you probably know some of that more this year than before, but it's ever been tracked before. So we don't have any historical data on that. But I mean, imagine anecdotal data, but I know nurses are tracking some of that. But it's, it's very, very, but whatever we have, we can check.
Thank you.
All right.
Who else would like?
I'm not done talking. So we're going to switch to professional development.
Yeah, y'all can stretch, take a moment.
But we're going to switch to professional development. Now that you've heard who we are, here's where we're going, right? So this is the purpose of it coming up next. Reminding you of the plan, this is like a drum we're going to beat all the time, plan for ongoing improvement. We want to deepen students' belonging and engagement in school. That's the attendance, that's engagement strategies, that's all of those things. We want to strengthen instruction and better connection between general education and special education. That's that tier one instruction, that's working with MTSS. We want to strengthen students' social emotional learning and mental health support. Lynn Lyons spoke to that and a lot of other of our initiatives. And priority four is to strengthen special education through improved coordination of service and specialized instruction. So just that's evaluation, goal writing. So as we go through this, it's not animated, but I do have a little graphic.
Dig on my animation.
No, it's just pointing out, I need to find out how to animate it next time. But it will point out that E1H is addressing. So the preschool is really focusing on priorities one, three, and four. They're doing an IEP bootcamp and they're talking about the brigands, report writing, IEP goal developing, classroom accommodations and behavioral strategies. So that's the focus of professional development at the preschool level this year. Elementarys, this is just an introduction slide. We'll get to the each one. So Witten Wisdom implementation. We are year one of Witten Wisdom implementation. Any teacher who piloted last year was able to implement this year, whether they piloted with Witten Wisdom or CKLA. In addition, any teacher that was of that grade level, because we wanted them to have peers to go next door and say, how did this lesson go? How can we better? We wanted that collaboration. So say a third grade teacher piloted Witten Wisdom, their partner gets to also do it in that building. That's how we chose it. We also decided to have new teachers. Try it too, because it didn't make sense for them to learn reading street for a year and then come in for Witten Wisdom. So that was our deciding factor. So they, they are piloting. They are working together as grade level teams. There are some PLCs throughout the districts that they work together. I know that there's a, there's a kindergarten, great, this Beeman kindergarten and East Gloucester kindergarten are really collaborating. They kind of was a homegrown. They really got along and, and go back and forth. So they're really supporting each other. That's great. We have our literacy leader team. I believe there's 15 literacy leaders. We have every grade level represented, every school represented. We meet monthly to talk about how we can support teachers in their buildings, teachers across the district in implementing Witten Wisdom. Our literacy leaders stepped up and many of them led sessions yesterday. And we'll get to that when I talk about November 8th. So that's great. And then foundations is currently K through three, every school. We didn't half implement that. That's full in. And Godes, which is the, the literature that goes along with it, is fully implemented in grades K through two. Foss training, we talked about that. Foss is back. We are implementing it in grades two through five. And we have one first grade classroom that is, is trying it out as well, or implementing it as well. And that is really, this is priority one and two, because there's a lot of engagement, there's a lot of bringing students in. And it's strengthening that core curriculum. Bringing two schools together, East Veterans School. There's a lot of professional development that has to go along with that. We have two communities that are coming together, that have their own identities and their traditions. And to bring that together is very important and has to be done skillfully. We also have two communities that had different teaching styles. So East Gloucester has traditionally been a platooning school, grades one through five, had one ELA teacher, one math teacher. And Veterans has traditionally been a co-teaching school. We're kind of bringing the best of both worlds together. When the two schools go into the new building next September, they will be a platoon school, one through five. Kindergarten will remain self-contained. But one through five will be platooning. They have already decided what subjects they're going to be teaching. And some grade levels at Veterans are trying out or platooning or, or being the pioneers of platooning in that school. And that's helping to bring the two schools together as well. Along with that, we are developing some, customizing some professional development to how can you co-teach within a platooning model? And you can. And so Mr. Fusco and I and, and Ms. Lambert are working with outside consultants to kind of give, and Ms. Provost. To really make that come to life and support that. That's going to be a longer professional development. That's kind of a bigger, bigger lift. But that kind of professional development's going on now.
I just want to make sure I understand. So the platooning model is where the kids switch for everything?
Yeah. So there are four classrooms per grade level.
At the new school.
At the new school. I don't know if it's going to be left or right, but for the purpose of this, we'll say left is ELA. There'll be two teachers that teach ELA. Mr. Fusco might correct me in its opposite, but right, don't forgive me, I hope.
You want us to use the example of East Gloucester?
Yeah, just use.
Just using East Gloucester.
Well, I wanted to, with the four schools. Four groups. Okay.
I think, yeah, no, I think simple is good.
Oh, okay, simple is good? Okay. So we have two grade levels, let's say third grade at East Gloucester. Ms. Hood teaches math and science and Ms. Reed teaches ELA and social studies. They each have a homeroom. The kids go to their homeroom. And approximately in the middle of the day, they switch. They stay with same group of kids. They have two teachers and it becomes a real team community.
So, and that's for every grade at East Gloucester?
One through five.
I'm a Beeman parent, so I'm accustomed to a different, that changes grade to grade.
Platooning, platooning means a little different at Beeman because there are some grade levels with three. Right? Three, three classrooms.
Right. Yeah. And different grades do different things.
Right.
So it's going to all be consistent?
Yes.
At the new school?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay.
And with four, it will be two and two. So they'll only have two teachers. Right? They won't have four.
Okay.
It would be like if we were teaching pairs, I would teach math and you would teach ELA. And Kathy and Sam, she would teach math and you would teach ELA. So your student would see two teachers.
Or a class that would see two teachers.
Yeah, each class. Does that make sense?
It's okay. I don't need that.
And the sliding wall, actually.
That's going to come, that's going to come with more.
Interesting how that gets.
That is going to add some more collaboration. And then science will be somewhere. Science is typically within the math classroom. Yes, math and science. Okay. Kathy, Keith has the same.
Oh, Keith, sorry.
Hi, yeah, that's just a new concept to me too, of course, platooning. I've never even heard of such a concept.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, it's just a new concept, platooning. So that's quite interesting. So is it, what was, what is the, what is the, what is the, what I'm trying to say is, is it, is it to have specialized teachers rather than generalized teachers? Is that the?
So the teachers are becoming more specialized because they, they focus in on one subject. Yes. It also gives a more of a community. The students really thrive in it at East Gloucester. I've, I've been there, spent there longer than I've been. I was at East Gloucester. And it's a nice model to be, have some flexible learning and, and support students with different needs.
Yeah. So and then part of that is, I mean, what we ask, historically ask elementary school teachers to do is a whole lot.
Yes.
You know, all subject areas, especially as you get into the higher, higher grade levels. So I taught a self-contained fifth and sixth grade classroom combined, all subjects. Didn't do very well. But just because we, we really ask a lot of them. And so in this way, you know, a little bit specializing, there's a couple things. You can really develop more expertise in that area. You're not spreading yourself, you're as educator, so, so thin. At the same time, we find that it also, as, as, and you're saying, can really develop a community. You know, you don't have just one teacher, but you have more than one. And that helps a lot as well, so.
And social emotionally, if a kid has a tough day, they get a reset. They get to go next door and maybe the afternoon's better. It, it has been, it is, we found it to be very productive for students and staff and.
You see, I've done less at West Parish and Beeman partly because it's, there's three sections, three classrooms per grade. So it's just, just the math doesn't add up as easy. It can, it can happen certainly in lots of ways.
Yeah.
But it's not quite as natural as that.
Just a quick follow-up. Seems like in West Parish, from my, my personal experience, there's some, some, some specialized instructors visit the classroom rather than the kids leaving the classroom, like a math instructor.
Yeah, I think those are more interventionists than classroom teachers. Yeah. Or title one teachers or those kind of, yeah.
Yeah, association, interventionist, right, yeah, a variety of books. Who are pushing into classrooms, provide services or additional support or additional instruction. Yeah, that's exactly right.
All right. And at O'Malley, we have four topics I want to talk about. So they are talking about UDL, Universal Design for Learning. It's really about brain-based learning and they focus on engagement, representation. So why we're learning something, what we're learning something, and then how. And it's really giving choice to students. Not everybody learns the same way. Not everyone can display their knowledge the same way. They're doing a lot of work with Katie Novak, who is an expert in the field. She's come to do staff meetings with them, we've done some online trainings with her. And they're finding ways to get, to create their lessons with more engagement and action and kind of flat process. And shifting the load of learning to the students versus the teacher doing all the talking. You want the students just to kind of have some productive struggle and, and, and really think about the information they're, they are learning and to digest it themselves. And so that's the goal of this. They also are working on literacy across the curriculum. Literacy does not just have to happen in your English or reading class. There's literacy that can be done in science and social studies and so forth. So they are working on having common language throughout the, throughout the school. So if they're taking notes in science one way, when they go to soc- social studies, they don't need to necessarily do it another way. They, they collaborate so that they're having the same literacy goals throughout the rest of the year. And then of course, the pilot at O'Malley, they are piloting three curriculum, which is a lot in one year. They are wrapping up Witten Wisdom this week. And moving on to Amplify ELA is the next one. And then after the new year, they'll be using Study Sync. Something amazing about this pilot, the teachers are being really thoughtful and into the curriculum. But they're also, there's some student surveys, they're getting student feedback on their experience with the curriculum, which is a lovely addition to kind of get their viewpoint of what's happening. So once this, the, the curriculum is selected, which we will hopefully be done on or around February vacation, we will be implementing one of these, are all teachers privately? So there are nine teachers and there's one that is leading, so she's doing some of the lessons, but eight of the nine, yes.
So I'm just sort of thinking, we talked about the like golden thread between every single school, right? And I'm looking at these different pilots. So like, we've decided that Witten Wisdom is going to be at elementary school level. Do the other two, Amplify and Study Sync, will those be sort of a nice addition?
That's what we're going to look for.
Okay.
Yeah. So a, a quick read is Witten Wisdom Elementary, Witten Wisdom Middle School, right? It's not that simple.
Right.
The curriculums are designed for different levels, slightly differently. The needs are different at each levels. Witten Wisdom might be the curriculum for middle school. It might not be. But we will, we do want to be thoughtful of that it transitions nice from one to the other. And that's something we absolutely can do with any of these programs. We want to make sure we meet the needs of, of O'Malley. And we want to make sure that it is, is, it's able to be implemented properly, right? So it might be the right curriculum, it might not be. There, you know, at, at the middle school, they have blocks, the timing is different. Wisdom's a longer, you know, 90-minute block versus a 60 minutes. That's hard to do 90 minutes and 60 minutes. It, it might not be the right fit, but we're not ready to decide that yet. It is part of the puzzle and we're looking at it. But we, it, we do want to be thoughtful about the transition from elementary to middle. We also want to be thoughtful about the transition from middle to high school. So for example, if one of these curriculum teaches a novel that is taught, currently taught at the high school, and it's the one that we adopt, we're going to want to then work with the high school and say, hey, we need to figure this out, right? But we're not at a point to make that decision to make those changes because we haven't, we've only piloted one so far. We've got two to go and I look forward to telling you how it goes in the spring. Okay? So last year, they did the ELA really deep dive on what the curriculum was and how it was working. And now they're piloting. We are now doing that deep dive with math at O'Malley. So they are, we, we started a committee, we're going to be meeting shortly to start looking at big ideas, which is their current curriculum. And see if it's meeting the needs of the students there. If it's something that we need to investigate to possibly pilot something new. We are collaborating with the state for the MTSS program and they're supporting us in bringing some interventions, more interventions into O'Malley. They started some last year and we're going to just strengthen that program. So that is also some curriculum development that we're working on this year. We're about a year behind the, the rate of the ELA.
I can't quite remember if we have someone in the wall of, in the curriculum.
Yep, Kate Robertson.
Okay.
She started this year. She is the curriculum coach for both math and ELA. And she's fabulous. Yes. Nope, we're going to have to have her. She is a panelist, if you wanted to say hello. I didn't tell her, I'm going to put her on the spot.
Why don't you throw her on the spot?
Don't put her on the spot.
I wasn't planning on putting her on the spot.
We would love to meet her when she is prepared. Two meetings.
It's coming to present the same approach and update and also December 14th.
Yeah.
I imagine if I ask nicely, that she'll come along.
I'm sure she will. She has quickly gotten to know the staff at O'Malley. She has quickly earned their trust, I think. I meet with her and regularly and she's really a wonderful addition.
Just so sad to her sadly.
Yeah, great. Yeah, someone's in that role and we're going to get her connected with the elementary coaches as well. She's been in touch with one or two of them, but just strengthen that line as well. Yeah, we're all positive.
Good. Love that.
All right. What?
Want to skip this one? Maybe skip this one? I'm just thinking that we did it and.
You did it, right? Yeah, you stole my thunder.
Get used to it.
But I have some thank yous to give with it. Can I give those?
Please give thank yous.
Okay. So Superintendent Lomas stole my thunder on this. I didn't know he was going to give such detail of yesterday, but it was fabulous. But I do want to give a little, some thank yous. I want to start out by thanking all of the instructors, many, many instructors who led sessions. We had over 70 sessions. Amy Cam and Katie Provo organized some outside providers. Amy Cam was the one who brought Lynn Lyons to come here. Katie Provo brought a lot of, some specialty providers to come in and help. But more fabulous is I want to just highlight our staff, teachers, parents, administrators, all led sessions. They taught, they got themselves out there. They were amazing. Who doesn't want to learn from their peers? And the courageousness that they had of going out there and doing it, I really am, am so impressed. And I really want to thank everyone who stepped up to do that. Most of the sessions were led by our own staff, which is awesome. I want to thank the co-
I want to thank the coaches who were critical in the planning and, and just getting the whole day running smoothly. They helped with the food for the snacks in the morning. They were directing people where to go, where their sessions were. They were helping people with signup pages. They were, they had literally a help desk set up. I want to thank Brittany Holmes, who works at the district office, working with all of the teachers to make sure they get PDPs and credit for all the, the courses they take. She also helped me lead a session, she was fabulous, she actually really read it, led it, not me. I want to thank all of IT. Alex Mason was running around O'Malley, getting adapters and fixing things and Ethan, they were fabulous. I'm going to thank IT for everything we did, the custodians, food service, providing coffee throughout the day and tea. The nursing staff put on a flu and vaccine clinic for all staff onsite. Mike Gaffney came and documented the day, so you got to see that. I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about Matt Fusco's band at the end of the day that brought us all together. Also happening yesterday at the high school, James Cook and his team were amazing. He had 20 people volunteer to share one of their lessons to get feedback from their peers. How courageous is that? Amazing work that they've done. And especially, and I'm going to miss them, Greg Bach. It was his day, he did all of it and he was amazing and I don't know, next year I think I might just put on a video and say, that's what I did on the. I'll try to live up to it. But he did awesome. I got an email immediately after, I won't say it's from, it's from a staff member, just wanted to say that today was amazing. It was, it was a great way to recharge. All of the workshops were valuable and inspiring. The rock band at the end just made, absolutely made my day. Well done for all of the presenters and to me and Greg for putting it together. So, that's great. I, you didn't take that one.
No.
All right.
And also just to really, I mean, this really hasn't Greg's work over the last number of years. Obviously, one, one part of his work, but a big, big piece. It took him so much to organize people and cajole them, convince them, also support them. He does so well organize it. It was smooth and seamless and he's really the orchestrator of that and has been, so. As Amy says, just a huge cheer.
Yeah, and after a pandemic and feelings so heavy, people were skipping out of there, happy and inspired and recharged. Okay, special education, professional development, that goes to priority one as far as engagement strategies, but also priority fours mostly are all special ed. We're streamlining the evaluation process, the goal writing, de-escalation strategies. We are working communication devices, the autism curriculum. And then we also have some social emotional training that goes to priority number three. And one with, with belonging. Superintendent Lemus talked a lot about Lynn Lyons, she's amazing. We're implementing the Trails curriculum, project adventure for three levels with some SEL support at the middle school. We are turning on comprehensive threat assessment training, which is not as uplifting, but we still need to do it. And then we are in partnership with the youth person SEL online trainings as well. And I got to the end. Anybody have any additional questions?
Every time Grace presents on professional development, I'm just so jealous. Yes, we learn all of the things, the lists every year.
Hopefully, thanks.
I don't want to be, that'd be downers. My daughter sometimes call me, but do you think that, one of the things that they talk about at the conferences, you know, teacher burnout, you know, people leaving the profession. And this sounded wonderful, I actually talked to some teachers today, confirmed everything you just said. Great professional development day. Is there a way to, I mean, so good that I'm thinking, well, do, do we need more of that type of stuff? And can it fit into the, into the school year? And I mean, I, I think back to what's manufacturing, I ran a place where like they had probably 80 people under me. And I knew that if those 80 people came to work, I'm feeling very good about, you know, stressed or burnt out, that my day was going to be a nightmare and I was basically going to put out fires the entire day. So I always kind of get back to that is, all the stuff about, you know, professional development is good. It's going to be better if the people that are administering that or delivering that are really feeling good about participating and being employed by the cost of public schools. So I kind of just get to that is, hey, what can we do to enhance that or to grow that out in some form or fashion? Without, you know, understanding that there's all, that's a big question.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate you raising it. It's probably the single most important question that we face in public schools right now. Teaching has always been incredibly difficult job. It literally takes all of you, it's all of your being to be a great teacher every day, you know? You know, it takes your intelligence, it takes your humor, it takes your experience of wisdom, it takes your humility, it takes your, it takes everything, right? And, and these days, it's more exhausting than ever for any number of weeks, for a whole host of weeks.
Right.
And so, you know, where we, and the we is pretty collective because it can't be just administrators telling you things, you know? Because that doesn't work, as Amy said, one of the most powerful pieces about yesterday was that a lot of staff led these things, a whole range of staff led these sessions, you know? But folks have got to have a sense that they can be successful. And they've got to have a sense that it's clear what's expected of them, you know? They got to know that, that, that people care about them and they care about each other, they have a more connection to each other. You know, and then they also, another piece on this is, folks don't typically mind learning if it's relevant to what they're, what they're doing. You know, one of the reasons I left teaching a long time ago was because the professional development I was getting had absolutely nothing to do with what's important. I was tired of being treated that way, very honestly, you know? So yesterday, I think, is a good example on a number of levels of the types of things we can do, we do do, we can be more of. Because the learning is really relevant to the classroom, it's really relevant to the challenges folks face on behavior anxiety. It's really relevant to connecting, you know? The backyard growers, the, the rock band, you know, there's also knitting and just things where people have time and they connect through the important learning stuff, but they also connect in other pieces as well. And that's crucial. So I'm not trying to say they're all things right, but it's, these are the types of things I'm really mad on. And then doing them well like that and doing them with, you know, collaboration with your teachers and educators and school secretaries and IT folks, as opposed to doing it to folks matters a ton. And then I think that's one of the things, you know, one of the legacies of Greg Bach that we all need to remember is the way that he has helped us develop a process for creating yesterday, you know, or our half-days. Also, how we consider and adopt curriculum. It always involves teachers, you know, releasing this away. It's always relevant to folks, it's always listening to folks, you know? And I think, you know, that's sort of sauce, the special sauce that is, is crucial to helping to feed people, helping to keep them engaged, helping to know that they're being affected. But that ongoing listening work and collaboration is to continue. It's incredibly, incredibly hard question, honestly. But you know, I do think that we have half-days as well, we have more half-days than a lot of folks. And I think those, you know, need to continue to be, you know, help. And I think we did a pretty, pretty good balance, we didn't hit it perfectly at all during the pandemic where we backed off on things. You know, it had, had some half-days where people just, you know, they wouldn't do. I think being true to that makes less sense. But you do have to be conscious always, even in normal times, that we're not, you know, overloading folks. And that's why we talk about just one simple thing, wisdom over the course of the years, you know? That's why our Trails curriculum in terms of social emotional learning is really being led by our, by our adjustment counselors, as opposed to classroom staff, you know? So we're trying to be thoughtful about that. We'll get it right every time, you know, but we need to make sure our, our ears and eyes are open so we can adjust. I, that's not just a lot of talk, but it's, it's something that I think our principals, our administrators, our teachers, our union leadership really think a lot about, get a very good answer to that.
And I appreciate that, I just, it's, it's become crystal clear to me, I mean, certainly not the smartest guy in the world, but understanding that it, the teachers are the foundation of delivering what we, what we do. If they're not in a good place, then, you know, the foundation is kind of, there's some problems.
I mean, another small example of this is, you know, another part of the foundation is our school secretaries. You know, and we've done very little, this is, this isn't just glossed over. Historically, districts don't do much support and professional development with them, you know? And so yesterday, we had a session led by Cohen Marshall for school secretaries on UNIS. You know, one of the key pieces of their, of their operations every day that has changed recently. But in order for them to feel like they can do the jobs well, they really need some learning, so we provided that. And then also even, and then the next step on that was, had a great meeting with Kathy Heard, the St. Vincent's secretary here. And about just ongoing, upcoming half-days, you know, what else can you, you know, support them with? You know, and so that's another place, listening to folks, learning what they need to help them do the jobs better and making sure you can, they get some of that. That's another place, I think, that's another example of how listening to folks and then supporting in ways that they need is part of connection to and to like be successful.
I appreciate, appreciate the answer.
I'll just follow up by saying, you know, I've done this for a while. Professional development now is very different than it did when I first got on. Much more, you know, everybody heard and discussed what, this idea of what's relevant and what's helpful. And it really has evolved through a very productive, exciting kind of way we approach it and way, kind of the menu item of some teachers can sign up for things. So it really is a more collaborative way, but also I think the quality and the relevance of everything that's being delivered with the peer, the outside speakers, it really has, has reached the points. Thank you.
Yeah, the other week, or I'm not sure which meeting it was, previous and at the end, Amy said, I didn't really say anything.
What's that?
A couple meetings ago or my last meeting, I didn't really say anything on the meeting. I'm like, that'll change.
So now, I need to be talking the entire time.
So thank you very much, Amy, that was very, I appreciate you working on, on that. So my goals, right, so you have copies of these. Can you just send this to Sam? I don't think Sam has to do that. There you go. I'll give you two. Share my school. So a couple things, because then we can go more in depth, so. So, talk about its plan for ongoing improvement, again, linking my goals to the plan for ongoing improvement. So priorities again, deepen student belonging engagement in school, priority one. Strengthen instruction and better general specialization, priority two. Priority three, strengthen student social emotional learning and mental health support. And priority four, strengthen special education to improve coordination of services and specialized instruction. All of that done well over a number of years, beats a deeper student learning, improved academic achievement and GHS graduates prepared for the next step after graduation, okay? We keep hearing about this tonight very purposely, in the budget process, you'll hear about this as well, the plan for ongoing improvement. My goals, as, as you've seen, as you've seen, are tied directly to the, the plan for ongoing improvement. The goals that the principals are working on, their goals are tied very directly to the plan for ongoing improvement. And the school improvement plan is tied to the plan for ongoing improvement, okay? Just as yesterday's program development, I build strong links as well, so. So this is what you see in terms of, in terms of my, my draft summary. I'll just, I'm going to zoom in here a moment, let me just show. So, goal one is different than the, goals two through four, two through five, sorry, mirror exactly the plan for ongoing improvement. The first one though is leading for the long term. That's really one of my main responsibilities, how do I lead in a way that helps keep us focused on, helps students, helps us keep doing day-to-day work well, but really also take a longer-term focus. How do we build our progress? That's progress in student belonging, progress in student learning and progress, progress in student academic achievement over the long term. So I'll go to that in a little bit. Goal two, again, aligned with the plan for ongoing improvement, deepen student belonging and family engagement. So this is the work that I'll be doing with our leaders and making sure they're making clear identifiable actions, increasing family engagement and/or student engagement, the student voice, student choice and leadership at our schools. Goal three, strengthen instruction, so, you know, strengthen instruction and deepening student learning and academic achievement is always, you know, the number, the most important work here. But there are many pieces that go into that. And that's why we always start with student belonging, right? Because without students feeling connected and, and, and understood and welcomed and loved in their schools, they don't, they can't learn or impede learning. So, but anyway, goal three, about strength in instruction. And again, this is the work that I will, I will do and do in coordination with many others, leading instructional improvement across all of our schools and making sure that we're collaborating in a way that makes sure that students, you know, a larger number of students are receiving engaging, high-quality instruction. They're getting supportive interventions and enrichment every day. That again, results in measurable student improvement and student learning and academic achievement. And then goal four, again, aligned with the plan for ongoing improvement, student emotional learning and mental health support. So the work that I will do, I'll get into specifics of all these in a moment, on supporting overall well-being of our students by assessing, analyzing a school culture and then making adjustments based on what we learned from that, from those tests. We've been doing a number of surveys for quite some time on student culture and student belonging, but haven't quite had the systems or structures in place to respond to that, really analyzing deeply, teams and sort of things. So that's something that we're working on. And then goal five, just the work that I will do supporting Katie Provo and our school leaders in making sure that we are shift, you know, growing and developing and making sure our systems for evaluation, analysis, IEP development are strongly having in the past, so. A couple of things about this, I've talked about how it's tied to the plan for ongoing improvement. On the bottom, you'll see at this point, DESI standards, those are the superintendent evaluation standards and how each one links to certain standards. As we go further along in the year, get more in the evaluation process, I'll identify specific indicators that different goals support within those standards. And then, because the intention is that when I'm giving you evidence of progress on these goals, that you don't have enough information to make assessment across the entire rubric, which as you folks know from prior years is lengthy.
Yes.
So, I won't, I won't go into, you, you read this, you see this, the point tonight is that, have you asked questions? Have you clarified things and also given feedback on it? Things that you don't see too much of or don't see enough of, that sort of thing, so I won't go through. But just to give you and others who are watching, so the basics, leading for the long term. This is about finalizing and really beginning to operationalize through your plan for ongoing improvement. It's all the work we're doing with East Veterans School. I mean, continue to bring veterans, East Boston together. That's everything from, that's, that's the, that's the sort of the people work, okay? We're getting into the facilities, capital plan work here as well. There's also the building work around these veterans. Leading for the long term is also about facilities and capital planning, you know, how to make sure that our, that we have the long-term viability of our school facilities. And then also operations, specifically operations that we're. And then also operations, specifically operations that we're, that I'm gonna really support this year as our human resource department. One of the things, Bill, another part of the answer to your question is, you know, our outreach and recruitment hiring onward. You know, those all feed into retention, you know? And certainly, it's a more competitive environment these days to getting school staff. And so we really have to start shifting and improving our, all, all levels of that, particularly outreach and recruitment hiring. Safety and security, always, you know, always new developments on that. And one of the things that Amy mentioned earlier was our C-Tag training, as well as, there's also cyber threats as well that we're doing. So we'll get forward, discuss that. Is it helpful if I stop after each one and pause and ask for questions or clarifications?
Okay, thanks. In relation to the recruitment, I'm just curious what your thoughts are, what my thoughts are on specifically stating sort of a goal around diversity in recruitment and hiring.
A couple of things are really important about, you know, our staff and their staff, reflecting our students, you know? Race, language. I think we, so, so those are two important pieces, that, you know, to me, but also to our students and stuff. Another piece, which is interesting, which we never talked about, is, I don't actually ever discuss it, but I just thought of it, is that you're reflecting your students, all our students are from Gloucester. One of the ways you reflect your students is if you have people from here, from the community. And, and people don't actually talk about that as an important piece of hiring or, or staff. I actually would like to say that that's actually in many ways a really powerful piece, you know? I think that's one of the reasons that we need to, because so many folks, you know, were born, live here, you know, and tied to here. Anyway, that's sort of aside. So the area for me that's the highest priority there in terms of diversity hiring is language, you know? It doesn't mean that other, other areas are part race, you know, cultural, also just the diversity of staff in terms of people coming from different places and areas. But the thing we've been really focusing on is, is folks' vocal languages. And we've done actually quite a good job of that, actually. We can share in daily, in the year, that'll be part of probably my evidence. But we have, you know, a number more bilingual staff now. And even just this year alone, I think we probably hired, you know, two or at least three, three or more. So, and that's, you know, tied to the fact that our community, but also our schools is, you know, growing in terms of Spanish and Portuguese. That's an area for us that's really important. Another piece of that is pipeline, you know? It's challenging to, to have, you know, folks move to other places, to any, to any new school system, okay? That reflect the population of the schools that live there. It's not hard for you to do. But you can build from then, you know? And certainly, there are a lot of families here who speak multiple languages that we could access. And we have multiple, you know, entry position, entry ways into employment in Gloucester schools. There's obviously teaching, because they're professionals. There's bus drivers, there's secretaries, there's booters, there's no new supervisor. So there's, there's a whole gamut of ways that we tap into folks who live in the community, whether they have degrees or not, that could be a part of our, you know, efforts on, on hiring multilegal staff. Hope that helps.
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions or clarifications or suggestions in this area? Just moving on, deepen student belonging and engagement. So, at O'Malley and Gloucester High, really important, they're making real important steps. You actually, you've heard some about them tonight, and making sure students, more sense of belonging, more leadership, more choice, and more voice at both middle and high school levels. You know, everything from being involved in creating the dance to being involved in running the community meetings at O'Malley. Those are just two examples. But supporting folks to make sure we get those done, that's a really high priority for both of these, those schools. And then, another area is making sure that Gloucester High makes, in my support of both principal and, and our director of school, school counseling and operations, and also career work tech, make sure that we're taking the initial steps to really work with students from the time they're eighth grade all the way through high school, that they're sort of identifying what their pathway is leading after high school. What's their next step is. And that's a, it's a guidance effort, that's an instructional effort, that's a communication messaging effort. But that's an area in terms of belonging that is really important, that I'm, you know, I've really set as a high priority for my work. Increasing family engagement in the school community. So that's everything from working with our elementary school and pre-k school leaders and also parent leaders. We were parent leader meeting this morning, and last month it was all about, I'm really, I'm really focused on ongoing efforts on family engagement and specifically building engagement of families who typically do not participate in school events or school activities and sort of thing. So working with our elementary school leaders as well as our parent leaders. And another area of that is continue to work with families and learn from families who are opting out. So we'll be launching, as I mentioned, a survey for folks who moved from our eighth grade and didn't, didn't continue into ninth grade at high school, and learn from them about the why. And what is it about Gloucester schools that you like or don't like, or saw or didn't see that fit for your child or children? And so that's another area where we're reaching out to learn from families, both in our district, but also those who opted out of our schools, about what they perceive as the strengths and what areas they need to improve in, so. And then other piece is just supporting our efforts on reducing cognitive pessimism. I want you folks to hold me accountable that we make progress in that area, not only in our actions, because of our teams, and also the results. And then, as we talked about earlier, just communication outreach, ongoing work on that.
Excellent. So all this sounds great, I just wanna put in a plug, because I think I have four. Just that our, our community continues to become more and more diverse in ways that are apparent and not apparent. At my bus stop alone, right? I have a family from Nepal, I have a family from Guatemala, you know? So there's a lot of people here. And so I just wanna, you know, I know that the different buildings are doing this, but just sort of, for all these cultures to be seen, for all these children to feel, because belonging means that the child from, you know, Southeast Asia is also being met, even though there may only be one or two, or. So I just, I see the ways in which, for every single child, especially in a culture that has such a dominant culture, like this community has a dominant culture, and then lots of smaller cultures or different cultures. So I just wanna put in a plug that we really work to see all of the cultures here.
Really, really important, you know? We talked just, with some of the parent leaders this morning, about this notion of diversity, access, inclusion, and belonging. And just, I just shared a sort of framework or really analogy, you know? On one level, you know, this is simplistic, but I think it'll make the point is, you know, diversity is that everyone's invited to the party, you know, and they understand the invitation. You actually get it, that you understand, that they know what's happening, right? So I have this here. Equity is that everyone can attend, because we've reduced barriers, typical barriers, you know? And if you're talking about a school event or that sort of thing, it might be childcare, it might be transportation, you know? It might be a timing, that sort of thing. Inclusion is that folks are there, and then they know they're welcome, and they know that their people are glad that they're there, a part of it, okay? And then belonging is that all sorts of folks are actually involved in creating. Because when you, when you have a wide variety of folks creating things, whether that be how parent conferences, or, a good example is the O'Malley, the O'Malley dance. Because the PTO is so involved, that actually changed how that was done, it made it much better, you know? So when you have more folks actually creating the event or the party or that sort of thing, more diverse range of folks makes a better experience, you know, better place. So that's just one framework, one, one concept, you know, or approach, but it helps sort of like put some concrete pieces to one of those big ones we meet. And that's, that's one way we help our schools and also our parent leaders to sort of think about that. But because when you go in and you know you're welcome, feel happy to see you, it's a whole different experience. Otherwise, it's a whole different experience. Everything, everything comes from that.
So I have a question on measurable. How do we measure? Some things seem, you know, there's a lot of, obviously, very good work, and some things can probably have some data that says we have this and now we have that. I'm sure a lot of it doesn't. So I guess as kind of flesh through the plan for ongoing improvement, I think those measurable pieces should be incorporated where we can.
Yeah, and that's why.
Knowing that goals are not necessarily, I know in the past we have goals that in year one, we're hoping to kind of leave the groundwork. In year two, we were hoping to do this, and year three. So it's not necessarily what is this year's measurable, but what is, when is it going to tell us whether that's year two or three, that we kind of made progress and gotten to a certain point.
And how are you measuring it, right? Like just, just even that, right? Yeah, so we're, we're both at the, at the leadership team, leadership team, but also the smaller teams. So Katie Provo is the team. That's part of operationalizing the plan for ongoing improvement is identifying timelines we have, you know? But the measurables and what the outcomes and what the specific measurable goals are and how they're measured. So, so you'll see that as the year goes along, not fleshed out, and that's the same sort of evidence that can be used here as well. It's, the, the plan isn't done. What we're gonna do is identify, but how are we gonna measure it isn't yet.
It was, it's funny that you brought that up, Kathy, and I appreciate it, because I only put a check mark next to one thing, is that's back to goal one, I put a check mark next to identify deliverables, timelines, and measurements of progress for the goal. And I'm kind, since I've been on the school committee, I've become more of a data person. I've never been that way my entire life, I've always been big picture, as long as I see some progress, I'm fine. But that certainly is important, and what does that look like? But I think you also explained that, then.
But that's exactly right. That's the work that hasn't been, hasn't been reviewed yet. That's exactly speaks to what Kathy was asking.
Exactly.
That, that bullies me, absolutely.
And the other thing that I, just to revert back to the conference for a minute, there was a gentleman that was the director of inclusion in the Cambridge Public Schools. He was, that was his job. Here I am as a 60-year-old guy that hasn't had to face any of that type of stuff my entire life. I was like, well, that's kind of a weird subject. By the time he was done speaking, I was like, you know, boy, I got a lot to learn on, on that particular end of, you know, the spectrum. And what, what can I do in my own self-examination to say, you know? Do I do a good job making people feel that they're different than I am? Making them feel included and all that kind of stuff? So, and I think that's a community effort. I don't think that's just, hey, the superintendent said that, let's, let's roll that out. You know, I think it's, it's a process for people, and I think it's something you gotta kind of work through yourself to get to that point. We're all more of that bent than maybe we were previously, so, if that makes any sense.
No, it makes a ton of sense, both things. Well, one, in terms of, you know, learning yourselves or ourselves, right? So Amy and I are participating in an MSS sponsored program, which is on, raise equity, diversity, inclusion. And, and the reason that the two of us are doing is for us to learn more about it and about ourselves and about our own biases and our own approaches, but also learn some skills, you know? And then to figure out, you know, what, what pieces of that fit with the work we're doing, you know? I will say this, that some of the latest thinking around issues of race, equity, diversity, inclusion is a lot of, of, you know, belonging, how you support a wide variety of, you know, all students? How do you support them not only in academics, but also in mental health, you know, and, and social, emotional learning? I think what I'm pretty proud about is that some of the most important pieces of that work are embedded very clearly in the plan for ongoing improvement. And I think the other piece you mentioned is, how do we all, our teachers, our school leaders, myself, you know, school leaders, ask that question of, especially classroom folks, classroom teachers, right? What, what am I doing, or what more can I do to make sure every student in here knows I care about them? Knows I believe in them? And that I'm taking them for who they are, not who I think they should be, you know? But those are, that seems obvious and natural and normal, but human beings don't, it's hard to know for that way, you know? So, but that's, so that's an important question, though, is how do we, you know, ask that more of ourselves?
I just wanna add sort of this, this nuance to the lying of like, of truly trying to understand people, right? And so, and I say that because in the work that I do, I'm often sort of faced with like not quite understanding maybe some things specific about a certain population, and, but I still am required to provide them with support, right? And so I can't ask that person to explain to me what I don't know. I need to seek that information out myself, right? So like, that would require me, and, and I'm using just myself as an example, but it's like a district is a whole, right? Like, so the teacher doesn't quite understand something about a specific population or identity to really seek out that information and ask for support. And that, I think, is just step one in helping, just help somebody feel true belonging and understood. And it just takes some humility on our part to be like, I don't know really how to support you, and I need to learn more, but I'm not gonna put that burden on you to teach me. I need to learn. And so I think that that's, to me, just like the most important piece of this, is like recognizing that like, there's so much that we don't know, that's okay, you just need to do the work to figure that out.
That, that's not easy work, that, that sort of learning is not easy. We definitely have to cater kids where they are, and then really try to understand who they are, where, where they're from, and different backgrounds and sort of stuff. Because they need to know that, no matter who they are, they need to care about. They need to know that every single day, for every single adult or a baby. Because, because then they can learn. And some kids, listen, some people don't need that. They just, like, you know, I can walk in a place and assume that, you know? I had that privilege, you know? Not every child does. So we have to make sure that they know that from a certain point. Goal three, so this is about, this is, this is the most important stuff, where it's where everything needs to, you know? So, as I've said before, in a strength and structural leadership, again, that's how, the work I'm doing with our school leaders, and that's through the goal setting with them, that's through the work we do at our community meetings, that's through the work I do with regular school visits, and then also making sure that I'm supporting work and we're putting in place the work around not going to curriculum reviews, you've heard a lot about tonight. That's across all levels, obviously. Continuing to work, we've been doing it at elementary schools, deepening the work we've been doing at, at GHS and really, you know, launching the work in a real way at O'Malley. Practice inclusive practices, so this is just some beginning steps on that, on instruction. That's just putting in place a leadership team that will look at inclusive practice and figure out what inclusive practices are for Gloucester, okay? And really defining that. That goes to the notion of, you know, clarity and what's expected of folks. And then, I would just, this sort of goes into some of the questions in terms of continuing to deepen our, our school just support for English learners. That's continued prioritized, I hired my local staff, talked about that. Translation support, we've added more this year, and we'll document that for you. And then the other piece on this, and this will be a three-year process, is, you know, that just like we've done curriculum work, instructional work in, at, you know, ELA math, O'Malley, at ELA math in middle school, and a whole bunch of stuff at high school, we're gonna be doing the same over the next three years for English learner education. That begins this year with tiered focus modern process, sorry, tiered focus modern process from Department of Education. And so supporting that our team is doing that and make sure we get that done. And then we'll go into, in the upcoming years, addressing our curriculum instruction better. Especially for newcomers, that's the area that we need probably just more support for our teachers, classroom teachers and EL teachers. When a student walks in from, you know, Nepal or Bolivia or Spain, you know, and they speak no English, how do you begin with them? That's a really difficult moment for a teacher, unless they have some of those strategies and skills, and we have some good support and curriculum work. That's the area we will work over, so beginning that process. And then, I'm talking about student social, emotional learning and mental health support. This is really about, from my standpoint, supporting some specific areas, something you've already heard about. But it's making sure from my standpoint that some things are happening. So that where I mentioned earlier that we have, we do surveys, we do, we do assess how students are doing in a variety of ways, but how are we using that to impact school culture and student belonging and improve that? How, how we're making sure that we have systemic mechanisms for identifying students who are in need and maybe require additional target support. So we do that very well in terms of active learning. And our, you know, support and launching last year, piloting this year a little bit more just with Amy Cam's leadership. And, and then how to, how to assess students for those needs and how do, how do we give them support? Part of that is this last piece, which is continue to build partnerships with community agencies. So we're not doing all of that, but we can help. We're better suited to connect those students or families who are in need with agencies that can really provide them support that happens outside of the school. In some ways, this goal is support Amy Cam and her, and her great team across schools. And so they add it away to some degree, but also make sure that, that they know that it's important to get these things done and we bring progress home. That's, that's a big piece of this. And in some ways, the last goal, goal five.
Can I say something on that? So you talked about existing surveys?
Yes.
Is it possible for you to just send us, just share an example of surveys you're talking about?
Yeah, a couple of things. So, so we do a variety of, O'Malley for the last number of years has been doing a survey three times a year. I don't want to say local, it's mainly MCAS, right?
Local, is it MCAS?
Yeah.
But they do students too.
Right, you know, so we know, and on top of that, they do vocal, the vocal survey, which is tied to MCAS. It's at the end of MCAS. We do YRBS every two years in our next school committee. You'll see a bunch about that. So that's another piece. So yes, we'll share that, yeah. We'll share the YRBS questions next time, sending them, and then the other surveys we'll share.
Yeah, because, you know, just thinking about so many of us are, have kids or like this is my first year without a child at school. So it's just really, just useful, I think, to understand what, what other families that took a level to the district are, you know, how we're engaging with that.
Yeah.
And, you know, just share it being, you know, sort of.
I think, I think that's another piece about it is not only have the school working with data to make it public so, you know, so we know and, and we can then see progress over time. The last piece is just sort of the blocking tackling of how do we really improve and strengthen our, our, sorry, our first education processes? So, and you've heard this, evaluation eligibility processes, starting our IP development. And the last piece is more instructional part and that's really sort of my efforts while we were working across a number of areas where I'm focusing my support is in the work that Katie Provo and Prinzels are leading. And so education, education staff are leading on autism and development, development delay programs and then supporting those, correcting those. As you were sort of focusing now pre-2 and 9 to 12 on that. And then support school district efforts to strengthen our therapeutic programs, specifically being in O'Malley. So that's work they're doing already. It's up to me to support it and make sure that we make no progress in those areas. That's, a fair bit of that is clarifying expectations, clarifying structural strategies and then supporting the folks and taking them and so on. So again, this, another way of describing this is make sure I'm supporting Katie Provo and, and her team. It's really important work that will help us on a number of levels. So it's a lot of stuff we're already doing. It's not new stuff. It's a question of whether I can support and our folks to make sure that they can get these things done across, you know, the elementary team, you know? And the most important piece is that, you know, no small group is doing way too much. So I think it's, it's across lots of roles.
So I have a general approach to what you've put forward, meaning of somebody. I realize this is all part of the important work that you do and that we are doing with the whole school district. And I wonder, has your mentor looked at your goals to say, maybe you should be, maybe it shouldn't have everything in your goals, knowing, I mean, we know the work will be happening, but I think the more specific or, or key things that I think we can evaluate on might be, like is this too ambitious for us to? I mean, goals should be achievable, right? And if you've got 20 really high priority things in here, I don't want anybody to say, ah, you only did 15. When 15, any 15 would be hugely important, right? So I just want you to think about that and think about how other superintendent goals. You know, is this, is this articulating a really ambitious picture? Even though we know the district ongoing plans for ongoing improvement is very ambitious. Does that all have to be in all of your goals? So that's.
Yeah, so to answer your first question, for the first time, no. My, my colleague, coach, has not really looked at these. So I think it's a good, it's a good step for us all to start future back. And if she has some suggestions, she will make sure I hear them very quickly. And it's helpful, yeah. No, it's definitely ambitious, I get that. You know, the, the challenge here is, as you folks know, like, this is not all my work. From my role, how do I help make sure it happens? But it might be just which of the two things.
So today we get the episode.
I was sort of going to piggyback on what you just said and what Ben sort of just recognized. It's a lot of ground to cover. And as you just said, it's not all you, but we've got a team. Give them a lot of credit where credit's due. But I have to agree with the chair that maybe it is a bit too much because you're right. Because I could just see some folks saying, you only got 15 out of 20. What a schmuck. So I'd be interested in what your mentor has to say. You refine a bit.
So this is our first review of, of the draft. And so that would be my feedback to you. I mean, obviously everything's important. Everything will have a huge effect on students and families, but you think about that before we talk further.
And make adjustments, I'll, I'll make sure what they are, I'll make sure you guys are clear.
And just because they come off, does it mean they're not being done? I guess is my point.
So I'm more a principal and, and that person was saying, because we have something similar with that, you know, not, not extensive this, but very online. And that principal was really saying that I'm very, I appreciate having, you know, real clarity on them, like this is the thing they got to pay attention to. So there is, so not, your, your point is very well taken and it's the right point to make. And in some ways it's kind of nice to know, like, yeah, we got to keep moving on these things. So, but I think it's a lot, so.
There's a lot for us to evaluate you on as well. There might be a practical aspect of this as well.
Throw us off the trail, we've thrown a lot out there.
No, no, not at all. Thank you.
So we will move on. Their subcommittee reports is next, and there have not been any subcommittee meetings since our last meeting. Under action, we have a couple exciting grants, at least one of them. Approval of the grants and I move that we accept the Brace Cove Foundation grant for the O'Malley Science Center in the amount of $200,000.
Second.
That's so we, they're all about great generosity and progress.
This grant is an amazing way to bring all of the fabulous things that are happening at the O'Malley Science Center and bring it out to third, third grade through eighth grade. We talked about bringing back FOS and we talked about not really having enough time to do FOS the right way in all of our classrooms, right? So this is an effort to kind of help with that. So this grant has five goals. To extend the quality of professional development in science in grades three through eight. And what that means is by hiring a science coordinator for three through eight, classroom teachers could go after school, say on a whatever Thursday, third grade is going and they can try out the lessons, they can prepare the lessons, they can really dive in deep and have support from the science coordinator how to bring that back to their classroom. So that's one goal. Another way is to utilize the science center for field trips, for experimental. So a fourth grade classroom could go to O'Malley into that science center, which I toured very recently and is so amazing, the things they have in there. So that they could go in and use the 3D printers or they could go in and see the bio lab or the slime lab. So that money will help with that. It will also help, help strengthen our connection with local science throughout the community. We have a lot of community partnerships and it allows that. It will strengthen some college and university partnerships to have some college students come in and it will be mentors and help out in the program. And to build our own internal mentors of high school students that could help out some middle school students and in turn, middle school students could be leaders for the elementary students that come up and really strengthen that science connection. It would help with giving some elementary students experience at O'Malley just to generalize transition part two, because they've been in the building and they've done some science experiments there. It's really a tremendous opportunity to also, you know, help support our elementary school teachers who have so much on their plate and their time is so tight to, to fit in science and do more than just fit in, to do it right and to bring all the hands on. And maybe bring the kids into the lab so that they can have the experience there or come and just train as professionals. And this money will also pay for some, you know, after school time for them to go and do that and then go back to their schools and bring that knowledge back home. So it's very exciting. It's a new and creative kind of innovative way to expand science and support it internally. So we're really excited that this grant can do.
And I noticed Amy Donnelly is, do you think she would like, I know she's very intro to the law that goes on at the school.
Yeah, she knows all that happens at the science center and I don't know if she wants to speak about it.
Amy, do you, would you like to speak?
She just joined us. She's unmuted.
I'm unmuted now, hello.
Thank you. We can hear you.
What's that?
I said, we can hear you well.
Oh, great, yeah. So this is really exciting. This, this Brace Cove grant, Mr. Hurley, he from Brace Cove approached Greg about an opportunity for a grant and this was something that was on Greg's plate for a few years to, you know, expand the use of the science center as a professional development place and a place for a community to do science. So we worked together with our engineering specialists to write this grant and yay, we got it. So really excited about this opportunity. We, we have a great science community at O'Malley. Our teachers learn from each other. We model labs for each other. We support each other in, in all of our endeavors. Our engineering specialist is like the Peter Pan of science and will make any lab happen that any teacher wants to do. So expanding that model to the elementary school is just another opportunity to, to, to move that all forward and we can all be doing science together.
Who do we thank? So Greg worked with, you said it was? What's that?
Amy.
Amy Donnelly, yes.
Greg Block.
Greg Block and was it?
Dave Brown.
Dave Brown. And Tina Ramos helped draft it. GF also supported in terms of like, you know, thought leadership and connecting with Brace Cove.
Brace Cove Foundation.
Not me.
Amy, do you know anything more about either Amy, about the Brace Cove Foundation? So that's, I think, what Laura is saying, because there's somebody we can, it's a huge grant.
It's a huge grant and we want to give huge thanks.
So the Brace Cove Foundation, the Hurleyhys are the, the people that approached us. I can get the information for you from them.
Just want to express our gratitude.
Yeah, it's fantastic. It's, it's so wonderful.
I had met with the Hurleyhys in my office and I figured if he was a tech, whatever it was, he made his money and they moved to Gloucester, I love it here. And they, we had thrown a few ideas at them for little grant opportunities. They want to do big stuff. And this is an example of big stuff. So they are a great asset. If you don't, can you example?
I will say this is that part of securing grants is the, is the connection relationship you make with the folks who are making the grants. Amy Donnelly really, really represented us so very well, first of all. Also really clicked and connected with the folks at Brace Cove. And, and so her work, her work over many years, but also her work in putting together this proposal with Greg, obviously, but also that connection that she made in terms of, and their, you know, faith in, in our team has a large part in getting this grant. So thank you, Amy, thank you very much.
Thank you. No more questions? Jane Maria, we'll call both.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Jefferson Blanty.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Verda.
Yes.
Okay. That's is exciting and unanimous. Yes, so thank you for, for speaking, Amy.
Great, thank you guys so much. Enjoy the rest of the night. This has been great listening to everyone. The, the energy and the excitement of all the things that are going on at the schools has been great. And it reminds me a bit of the, the quote from, was it Alice in Wonderland and the Red Queen? And having you run as fast as you can just to stay in the same place. And if you want to get anywhere, you have to run twice as fast. And that's what we're doing at this school for the last 20 years, that we just keep running faster and faster just to stay in the same place. So this is, feels like progress and it's exciting. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we have a second grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for fiscal year 2023. Grant number 222 slash 325 targeted assistance grant, the amount of $30,000. And I live that we accept this grant.
So this is the targeted assistant grant from the state. It is targeting both O'Malley and the high school, 15,000 of each. And it's working to support the initiatives that they're having. There are already some, some curriculum work, lesson redesign. We are going to have Carol Gregory come in at the high school and do some work with, continue with their lesson design and development, how to coach that to be even more impactful in the classrooms. And we're happy to have the extra money to do that.
Yeah. Questions, Maria, we'll call both please.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Jefferson Blanty.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
And Maya Verda.
Yes.
Okay. Next order of business under action is approval of the addendum to the Gloucester Teachers Association contract regarding temporary change to the sick bank language. Ben?
So, no, so, sorry. I'm not sure what the question is, because you voted on this and you consider an executive session and this is just about to public vote.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
So we voted as executive session to allow for use of the sick bank with COVID-related, COVID-related reasons.
And just as a quick summary for, for the folks who are listening, it, it sort of acknowledges that there's still a requirement for, for quarantine and that particularly is thinking about newer staff who may not have, you know, or have not accumulated sick days and maybe, and may need them. And it allows the sick bank, the sick bank, a sick bank process to be sort of invoked, so to speak, to consider whether or not a stat member could, you know, could, could be granted up to 15 sick days during the course of the year because of COVID related absence. And similarly similar to what we did last year, the change this year is that the process And similarly, similar to what we did last year, the change this year is that the process is better, it's more well defined, so there's a little clarity on both our side, administration side, and also the administration side.
Further clarification, these are sick days donated by other members of the union.
Right, right. These are sick days we're making up. The sick bank, you know, process is something that, you know, it's a longstanding process where sick days, sick days are donated by members, they have a sick bank of a significant number of those accumulated. And the process is, basically, the process is a member comes, employee comes to sick bank, and the sick bank, you know, which is two union members and two school members, you know, make a decision on that, on case by case basis.
Okay, we have an option?
A move acceptance.
Second. Okay. Any questions? I think seeing none, recall vote, please.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Chairperson Blantsey.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
And Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Action carries unanimously, 60-0. Okay. Next item is session and other communication over the business, East Gloucesters slash Veterans Memorial Stadium, we have a, we'll say East Veterans Elementary.
Oh, yeah, right, sorry. Yep, got to do that. Mayor Verda, do you want to give the latest news that what Sue Egan, Sue Egan?
Yeah, so we did the, what's the, project funding, PFA, I signed the other day. As we all know, the lawsuit was thrown out, and so we're able to move along. I thought Sue and Egan got on the final paperwork together, I signed it, we're good to go, we'll start submitting invoices for reimbursement.
Great.
So there you go.
Thank you.
It's a big deal. It's a big deal. It's a big deal.
And there's still building, and there's still buildings in the school as well. We have a school building maybe tomorrow night. We'll focus on more detail of it.
And then we'll have pictures in the next meeting.
Yes.
Be able to share.
And also, pretty much on a weekly basis, we're up, there's a weekly update section on the building website, and that reports go up every week, you know, which is sort of gives the rundown of what's been accomplished the past week, what's been accomplished. But, yeah, we'll show those photos as well.
And I noticed driving by the retaining wall seems to have gone in.
It's all happening. I guess another update related to this and an invitation. So we, the administration is going to be presented to the city council through the November 22 meeting, updates related to the East Vet School, what's going on with the move of Meadows over to Green Street, what's going to, what's the plan for East Gloucester school site once we're done? And if you could sort of come and say, as of today, 22nd, it's going to have the building.
Okay.
And we need to be there for the O'Malley, we'll be there as well, so. Yeah, I think that's really the timing.
Yeah, we have a good city council meeting.
Yes, we competed with them tonight, I don't know who got higher ratings. Because they have a special. Nelson's tomorrow.
Sam.
I said something to this.
Okay, we're good. So I have been approached by a number of parents, and I would include myself in sort of that concerned group, just about the options that are available for school lunch, particularly at the elementary school level. And I realize that a lot of this is probably out of our control, but I think it's worth having that discussion publicly so that the community can just sort of see what we, and the committee can actually have a conversation about what we can actually do to make some changes about just sort of the, how healthy the options are or not. It's pretty staggering when you look at the nutritional effects on the site, what we're serving the kids. And I realize that this is like, I have friends in Manchester, it's happening there, it's not just us. I think it's just sort of a bigger conversation, but I think it's really important one to have. So that would be referred to the building and finance, that's one of the topics under that, right?
I don't know, actually. I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was more that we just need to have food services come and just have a conversation with us about, like, this is how the process works, because it's a state-funded program. Yeah, so you want to understand what Martha Jo Fleming has for guidelines and requirements. And like, how we choose our food? Or is it even a choice? Right, like, I think there's just lots of questions about how much control and choice do we have in terms of.
Tell me if I'm correct, but I share this, but also, and do we, as a district, have any, I mean, like Sam said, we may not have much control or any control, but where are there places where we do have any input?
I mean, probably the way we food services manage and.
And the choices that are available.
The choice, it's not about management, I think it's just about content, but it just, does the Gloucester Public School District have any options in what we serve students as for school lunch, or is this all sort of handed down to us by the funders, basically?
Yes, and also looking at more than just food, right?
Yeah, yeah, and like, what control do we have as a district?
Right, understanding how it's done and what options there are, and are there more insurance options?
We'll figure out where that can go with the agenda. I just want to remind everybody, next Wednesday is the ceremony for the Sawyer Medal Awards.
Who's speaking, Ellen? She's on the program.
You are.
Yeah, no, you're on.
Last year, we would be like, sort of divided up, so I wasn't sure if we had a.
Yeah, we had really two this year. Okay. All right.
Is there a school committee meeting next week, or just be enough?
Just be enough.
Just be enough. Be enough before the sort of thing, maybe in five minutes.
And then no meeting in the coming two months.
It's early now, starts at, starts at seven?
Seven. Yeah, the calendar of meetings is not correct. It is, yeah. And our next meeting is Wednesday, November 30. Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Hudson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Chairperson Blantsey.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
We have now adjourned. Thank you. Anybody who's still in there with us? Good night, Keith. Good night.